Good evening. We call to order the regularly scheduled meeting. It's January 27, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Cynthia, could you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liz, can I please have a roll call?
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Skornica?
Here.
Next up is the approval of our current agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
It should be amended.
I was gonna say, we need to amend that to remove the approval of the council minutes, since we don't have those. Do I need to make a motion to amend the...
Well, I don't think anybody supported that motion, so I think we can just redo the motion to... Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes as presented to eliminate the minutes from the December 16th and December 20th meeting.
Support.
Was that George?
Larry Hayden.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Agenda.
Let's go with agenda as amended. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries 7-0. All right. So, item number five would be the minutes that we just amended, which makes five second items. That will be the treasurer's report, the building department report, the ordinance violation report, and the board minutes of the DVA and the Brandon Township meeting. Next up will be our dispersments.
I would just like to make a comment on the tracking report, that the ones that are needs action, that those act, that that action is taken.
For the ordinance violation?
Yes. These right here. These are from September, July. I got down those.
These are dispersments.
I just have a, I guess it's more of a comment, well, maybe a question. On number two...
Can we have a motion first, please, if you don't mind? And then we can have discussion.
A motion for what?
The dispersments.
No, okay.
Is that what you're on?
Yeah, I'm on that.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report ending January 15, 2020, and pay the village's billings in the amount of $9,722.29.
Support.
Do we have any discussion?
I have a question, comment on number two. Did we check with Amazon prices on those?
No, I did not. I did check another, I did have a second site that I went to, but Amazon was not one of them.
Okay, just, you know, run out for next year, 'cause I had looked on Amazon before I came in, and I know that there's 144 in the box. I didn't know how many boxes you purchase, so I couldn't figure out like what that was. But they had eight and 10-hour ones, and these, you say, are eight hours. They have eight and 10. So I think, might be comparable, it might be cheaper, but just to check that for next year. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Number 29, what was that for, under cabinet lighting?
Underneath where I sit, underneath the cabinets that hang from the ceiling, I have lighting. And those had yet to be updated with the LED lights. And that was actually, we had to purchase whole new units and lights for those, and also Dale's office under shelving lights.
Okay. So that was updating the lighting, then?
Yes.
It's not new, it was just updating it? Okay.
I have a question. Were you done?
Yes, go ahead.
Items 11 and 27, Hamilton's of Ortonville. So, we get a lot of our fuel through them. Is it special type of fuel, or what?
We get all of that fuel.
Okay. Do we get special pricing? Pardon me?
We get our propane tanks as well.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess the question is, are they competitive rates, right? So it's one thing to buy local. I get ahead and on, so...
It's my understanding that it's, we're buying from a local village-owned company. And please...
The fire department buys all their fuel from there as well. And they do give us a discount, and they also take the sales tax off of us.
Cool.
They probably do, I would think. Because I don't think they would charge us tax, because we're exempt from that, so they probably do the same thing. If not, we'll piggyback on the fire department.
Well, I have one more, one more other question. Huron Valley Fire Protection and annual inspection and all that. So, I'm glad you're here tonight, Chief Coopas. Is this something that we have a private contract we have to go through? We can't use our own fire department?
We can use our own, we cannot use our own fire department. However, our fire department will give us the name and phone number of another person that we can check to see if the prices are competitive. We've just used Huron Valley for the last three years, and so...
And what, you're talking about the fire committees?
Correct.
We cannot disassemble those, inspect those, recharge them, and rehang them, re-pack them, and put them on the wall. It has to be a licensed contractor to do that.
Okay.
And we are not licensed to do that.
This is my question, thank you.
Any other questions? The motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilwoman Ashman for the dispersments. Liz, can I please have a question? Sharon?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Yes. This evening, we have nothing on our cons... Oh, I'm sorry, let's skip over. Next up is our public comments, which is item number seven. And this will be, at this time, agenda items only. So if you would like to please step forward to the podium and share your name with us, that would be great.
Hi. Excuse me. Luanne Mann, 57 North Church Street. I don't know really what I'm gonna say, because I don't know what's gonna come up about the Cosman drain tonight. But it is unfinished business. And this past week and a half, our one building on our property, we've had to do roughly $4,000 to $5,000 worth of repair from the constant flooding from the park that has caused into our building. It floods, we've had the walls discolored, we've had mold, and we've basically had to go in and cut the lower six inches of all our stuff out. And I know you're working on it, but I don't think anybody on the council would find this acceptable, to have this happen to their property. So I hope there's a little bit more of a push to get this matter taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the reminder. Item eight, which is our consent agenda. There, we have nothing this evening. Brings us to the trustee committee updates.
Chief Coopas is gonna talk about, just on our next item, about turnout gear, so I'll just pass that on to chief when he gets up here. And regarding Parks and Rec, very active winter programs in session, as is typical this time of year. Ski and snowboarding club, they've had interesting weather. That's been a bit dicey as far as getting them out, but hopefully that's gonna, we're getting a little better weather now. But when that rolls, that's always a very well-tended thing. Other things they have going on, of course, is their basketball and volleyball indoors at this point in time. And I think the big item that I'll announce that they do every year, and it's a huge hit, is the daddy-daughter dance and the mother-son date night. And they both happen to be on Thursday, February 20. Daddy-daughter dance is at the Brandon High School cafeteria, and the mother-son date night is at the Brandon Middle School cafeteria. And that's always, always a lot of fun. So, I think that's it, and then other issues, we'll wait till later on. But that's it.
And tomorrow?
Tomorrow, oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, that was a later item, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a later item.
But tomorrow, yeah, we've got a joint session here on Parks and Rec Master Plan. It'll be here at the township office, starting at 6 o'clock. We'll be here at 6, and hopefully we can be in attendance on that.
Will there be an agenda for that, Pat?
I think basically what it is, Dan, is just to approve passing on the Parks and Rec Master Plan to the consultants at this point in time for a final copy. Yeah. So we're okay timeline-wise on that. It's been tight, but we're good to go. We get this through tomorrow, and I'm hoping we're not gonna have any major issues on it. We should be good to go to pass it on to the consultants. I would say if there, if there is an item, that's a pressing item, my understanding is, we could still pass it on and amend it at a later date if we got an item or two that really has to be changed. But I'm hoping we don't have too much. Most of the changes that I came across, almost all of them at the December 20th special session, those were incorporated into the plan that you'll look at tomorrow night.
So we'll get a chance to touch back on that again when we get further down?
When you say further...
We'll get a chance to talk about it further down in the agenda.
Well, we can, I can repeat some of that, but yeah, that's basically it. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, Liz, did you have something you wanted to add about that?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that we do need a quorum for tomorrow night, and also it is included with a public hearing, so there's a second public hearing. And that's all I wanted to say.
Do we have that quorum right now? Should we check on that tonight?
Well, you can do that.
Do a roll call, see who's gonna be there?
Well, you don't have to do a roll call.
Yeah, what did you get on us?
Well, we wouldn't do a roll call this evening for a meeting tomorrow night.
What's the advanced notice, though?
I think we have everybody in attendance at this point.
That's fine, that's okay.
You have all been advised of the meeting.
Okay.
And then we just have to see who shows up, to see if we have a quorum. But to speak to your...
Sort of like tonight.
We will have an agenda for the meeting. Yes.
And we don't have a, this is a final draft that we can look at before tomorrow?
I think it is a final draft tomorrow.
For tomorrow, we'll see it for the first time.
You bet.
A final draft, but you know what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we'll have that.
Okay.
And from what I understand, it should, maybe it'll be all in black. The public viewing has been in black and white, or, I'm sorry, black and red, you know, show changes and things like that.
Okay.
But I'm assuming that's gonna be all in black.
Yeah, it's a pretty bare bones.
Okay, that's fine.
I guess I'm up.
Okay, Larry.
Planning commission did not meet. We do have master plan on the agenda later. We did receive some feedback from Oakland County, so I think we're gonna be reviewing that later on this evening.
I really don't have anything to report out on the roads. Bob and his team have been doing well to keep the roads clear and safe. And as far as drains go, we'll talk a little bit more about it in the further in agenda.
As far as weight finding, I've been waiting to hear back from Matt Bailey, because we were thinking sometime in the beginning of the year, as far as from DVA, when we can move on and take our next steps. So, I'll be reaching out to him, and then possibly setting something up for later on this month for weight finding, to start picking backup again.
I have an IT meeting Friday with office staff to go over the equipment. Historical Society does not meet in the wintertime. I do believe that they met in January for their end-of-the-year luncheon, dinner. I attended the EOA board meeting, as I'm a board member. And the, I just wanna put out there, oh, that, well, I'll bring this up later. That's it for me.
Colleen, I have a question for you regarding the Windows 7 fiasco, where effective January, what, 14th, no longer any support for Windows 7, both from a tax standpoint and a security standpoint?
We don't have Windows 7.
Okay, just cares. Okay, have we got Windows 10?
We've all upgraded.
Nice.
Yeah, that's, we're ahead of it there.
Good, ahead of the game.
Do we have any...
But thanks for checking.
Well, talk to Larry about his situation.
Oh.
Which is common.
Do we have anything that's running a Windows Server OS?
I don't know, right off the top.
Super good question.
I don't know off the top of my head, we can follow up with that.
Okay. It might be something to check, because I know our company had to make sure that we also upgrade not only Windows 7, but anything that was running Windows Server 2008, because of similar situation they're driving.
I'm guessing that we don't, because, but we'll follow up and check.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And DDA had met again this morning, had a chance to kind of touch base and review their annual... What color? My brain isn't working. Accreditation. Thank you, their evaluation, two weeks ago. And so get a chance to take that feedback and look at it. I'm pretty confident that they're on the right path, kind of planning some things for the year, tweaking a couple of things based on the feedback. So that was nice. You all have your minutes in your packets, so if there's any questions, please feel free to ask Matt or Matt on that one. Didn't tell you the new business, and first up, we have the Brandon Fire Department, purchase of the new turnout gear.
Okay. So, I just wanna start out real quick. Your year-end report is in there as well. So, if you have any questions, you should have a little trifle, let me know, and be more than happy to answer that. Moving into the turnout gear. We had submitted for two AFG grants, which is the Assistance to Firefighters grant. Both of those, unfortunately, we were denied. The last one, we found out the end of October, finally, that we were denied. Basically, the long and short of it is, is that there were, I don't know how many millions of sets of turnout gear that was requested. The newest, if you would, set that they would replace was 14 and 1/2 years old. So they were replacing gear that was, you know, 14 and 1/2 and beyond. Ours are at the 12-year mark. NFPA is a standard that says turnout gear should be replaced every 10 years. So, we were waiting for the grant. The other issue that we had with the grant is the amount of reserves that we had. They saw that, and they said, you know, there's agencies out there that don't have any turnout gear at all. We did get a call at the spring of the year, asking us if we were still using the turnout gear that we were requesting to replace. Of course we were, because we didn't have anything to put in its place, right? And as soon as we said that, we did find out that that was another one, because there's agencies out there, I guess, that have no turnout gear. I don't know how they can be doing interior structural firefighting with no turnout gear, but that's not for me to say. So, any case, the long and short of it is, we were denied. We waited for both of those grant cycles. So now we are to the point that we need to replace our turnout gear. We actually have some gear that if we grab, we can rip it apart, which is definitely not safe for our firefighters. We've taken most of that out of service, but we still have some that are of the same vintage. So it's only a matter of time before they're gonna do, the rest of the turnout gear's gonna do the same thing. Last time we purchased turnout gear was in 2007. So what we're looking at is, we, there was a committee made up of five different agencies. When we first put the AFG grants together that we were going to submit for, there were five different agencies. From our agency, we had two people that were involved in the selection process, and that was Lieutenant Doug Bryce and firefighter Tim MacArthur. It's important that I announce, make sure that we give them recognition, because they're the ones that did all the homework on this, along with the other five agencies, or four agencies. They sat through, did tests with it, as far as actually picking things up, the mobility, moveability, the lightweight, easy to clean, how did it feel, all that kind of stuff. Did some scenarios with it. So ultimately, they tested the stuff that we're requesting tonight, Innotex. They looked at Globe, Lion, and Fire Dex. When they went through all of those, what they come up with is, Innotex was by far the best with everything. So then the question was, well, where can we get Innotex? Well, Innotex is a name brand that only one supplier in southeast Michigan sells. So that is Douglas Safety Systems. So it's a single-source supplier. We did look at Globe, we looked at Lion, we looked at Fire Dex to see what the prices were in comparison. An ensemble that we are looking at for one person, for everything, is $3,151.50. That's per person. We're looking at 34 sets, okay? A similar-priced ensemble from Globe, from the Fire Dex. Globe was at about $4,039 and some change. Fire Dex is right around the same price, the $3,000. The problem with the Fire Dex is they were actually older technology. So when we had the firefighters put the gear on, and Mark was able to put some of the new gear on, I wasn't able to bring it tonight. I was hoping, and the salesman stopped and picked it up, he had to take it to another department. The moveability, it just felt stiff. There was very little, it just didn't feel right. So then when we, when they were doing the Innotex, they had full movement, full range of motion, with no pinch points, no distractions, if you will, as far as, I can only lift it up this far. So you didn't wanna be like the kid in the Christmas story, right, where he's running down and can't move. So you don't want your firemen like that. You want them so that they can move around. So, Mr. Batsu, you had a chance to put the gear on, what'd you think?
It's very flexible. It's lightweight, you have full mobility in your arms, and you can imagine being in a situation where you need that flexibility, and now you have it.
How was the weight in comparison, Innotex to the others?
It was probably about, you know, I can't remember, but I wanna say it was about five to 10 pounds difference. By the time you look at the pants and the coat.
You mean lighter?
Lighter, correct. Yep.
I know they already have to carry a lot with the hose and everything else, so anything you can shave off helps.
Yep, absolutely. Well, with the SCBA on the back, you know, that carries extra weight. And then when we talk about helmet and all that. And we were able to look at some different helmets, and you were able to pick up what we're currently using, feel that weight, and compare it to the other ones that we were looking at. So anyways...
Mark got to have all the fun then, huh?
He did, he did.
Do you want pictures?
We have Terry Darnell in photos.
I tried to phone in, they wouldn't let me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Chief, while you're talking, but you might wanna, for any visitors or viewers, just describe what turnout gear is.
So turnout gear ensemble is, we look from head to toe. So it's a helmet, it's the turnout jacket, the bibs, the boots, a hood, and gloves, right? To keep you fully protected. The turnout gear is rated up to about 780 degrees. You don't wanna be in that very long, at 780 degrees. Trust me, been there, that's not fun. So, you know, turnout gear's come a long way. When I came on the department, and I like telling stories, MacArthur's not here tonight, so... When I came on the department, we had what we called three-quarter boots. So you rolled them up, they were, you know, like hip boots, almost, right? They weren't quite weighters, because they were individual boots. And then we had long turnout trench jackets. And we had a helmet, and we had rubber gloves, that were called Red Ball Rubber Gloves, and you couldn't grab anything with it. Today, the gear that they have is so much more protection. They're covered from head to toe, and they still have dexterity to be able to pick things up, and sometimes very fine things that they can pick up with their gloves. So, it definitely has come a long ways. With that technology comes cost. An old set of gear like that probably would've cost them about $1,000. So, significantly more money. We do get about 10 years out of them, or more. As I said, we're in 12 years with our current turnout gear. So what we're looking at, what we were able to do was also piggyback on some current bids that are already out there. One is the city of Detroit for boots, hoods, and gloves, and the city of Flint for the coats and pants. By doing so, we were able to save almost $5,000. So, significant savings by partnering up with other bids. We're not the only ones doing that. Pretty much anybody that's buying right now is doing that. What I will say is, the turnout gear that we're looking at, newer technology, newer everything, it's been in use with the city of Flint for five years. They haven't destroyed it yet, and they said that's a good thing. So, they're very, very happy with it, and we will be as well. The total price for that is $107,451. So the other thing that I did leave out of there is that this will also give each fireman a flashlight, that they'll be able to put, clip onto their turnout coat. And it's got a head that swivels. So that way, if they're crawling, they can flip that up and crawl through, and it's an LED light. It's not a rechargeable one, which is good, but with the LED technology and the batteries that we have today, they'll last quite a while. And then the other thing is to put a bag, so we can put all the turnout gear in a bag, so that when they put it in their vehicle, it's protected from sunlight, because we are finding that that is some of the problem. If it's not put away where it cannot get immediate sunlight to it, then it'll shorten the lifespan of it.
So with that Fire Dex, you said that was the one that didn't have the mobility?
Right.
Right. Because, so would you say that the coat would be, you know, the most expensive item, or like the bibs?
It's the coat. The coat's the most expensive item all the way around.
So, you know, I saw one for, you know, just under $850, $847. So, that was, because that was one that you selected, I was just curious as to what that would be, so I looked that up.
And it, and it probably doesn't have the same inside liner, because you also have to consider the liner that we purchased for this as well. So you gotta keep all those in mind, because the coat has an inside liner, as well as the bibs.
And then, could you just explain the NFPA, the difference between 1851 and 1971?
Well, I don't know what 1971 is, but 1851 is for turnout gear specifically. And it talks about the cleaning, the storage, the maintenance. So everything with turnout gear is under 1851. But if you'd like to tell me about 1971, that would be awesome.
Well, 1971 is the governance of it. And I was just trying to figure out, so you get the difference between the governance of the requirements versus the selection.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that one. I'd have to go back and read it.
Okay. It's the standard governance requirement. But I was just curious, if that, how that tied into the 1851, is all? Okay.
1851's the one that we go by.
Okay.
Because that's the one that's gonna talk about how the turnout gear is to be used, cleaned, maintained, and when it's supposed to be replaced, and retired from service.
Maybe the manufacturers have to follow the 1971 then?
Probably.
That's what would be my guess, okay. That's what would be my guess, okay.
You said your gear's 13 years old. I assume you have this on your budget, right?
Yes, we do.
To buy this?
Yep. Yep. We have it in two different spots in our budget. We have it under line item 205, 344, 740, 205, and then 20,000 miscellaneous grants. We had put both in there in case we got the grant. We were looking at a 90-10 grant, and we would have had to pay 10% of that cost. Fortunately, since we didn't get it, then we'll take that fund and put it towards the rest of the grant, or the rest of the turnout gear.
All right. And where's the old gear going?
Well, so what we're gonna do is, we'll take the best and try and keep that. What's that?
Highest bidder, right?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, no. We can't sell it to anybody else because of the age. But what we can do is, we can use it for personnel that are coming in to possibly doing part-time shifts, that are coming in as new paid-on call, that are going through training processes, that type of thing. So we'll use that until, for a year or two till we can, and then we'll be disposing of all of it. We cannot sell it because it's past the 10-year mark. Nobody's gonna buy it. So I wouldn't either.
I definitely appreciate your enthusiasm. The safety is the most important thing, but we're glad that you checked on price too.
Oh, yeah.
But definitely, you know, no questioning.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Are there questions? Are you looking for an actual motion from us?
Sensing, yeah.
Anybody like to make that?
I'll make a motion. To approve the purchase of 34 sets of turnout gear from Douglas Safety Systems for a total cost not to exceed $107,451. And from E&amp;H Budget Lines, 205-344-40.205, and that's the fire gear, and also 205-344-756.205 under miscellaneous.
Support.
Sorry.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Skornika.
That was Batzou.
I did say, I wrote Batzou, and I still said Ashman, I heard you. Let's try again. Motion by Councilman Batzou, supported by Councilman Skornika. Any further questions or comments? Liz, can we have a little trouble, please? Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornika?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Any idea when those will be in?
We still gotta go through the township board, so then probably about eight weeks after that, so eight to 10 weeks.
Thank you very much.
And then will you bring one in?
Absolutely.
Will you wear one?
Next up is our building department fee schedule.
As I noted in the agenda with the notes, over the course of the last three years, there've been several building permits that have expired or needed to be renewed before they are completed. People haven't gotten their final inspections, or they're still working on them. And our current policy indicates that we charge 20% of the original building permit fee to renew a building permit. And we're not really covering my time to contact them, say, hey, your permit's about to expire, what do you intend to do, that kind of thing. The most recent permit that I had to renew was for $2.50. And so I spoke to the building official, got his opinion, and we came up with maybe amending it to, say, $25 or 20% of the original building permit cost, whichever is greater. And then he also indicated, even though we've never had to do one in my tenure, that if we are going to amend our building fee schedule, we should probably amend the permit transfer fee from $25 to $50. So both of these are an amendment and resolution to the building fee schedule.
And in talking to Bill, that's common within local standards that seem to be elsewhere, because I know he's in multiple communities.
Now, you know, one of the things that could make a difference would be, and I have talked to trustees, Skornika, about this before, we don't have a program for our building permits, ordinance letters, anything like that. And so I have to manually keep track of all of our permits. And so I have to go through on a regular basis and see if something's going to expire, if they've had an inspection, that kind of thing. A program would alleviate a lot of that, but until we have something in place, which I'm hoping maybe by next fiscal year, you know, it, $2.50 really is not paying for my time to see if a permit's expired and send a letter to the person, collect the fee, that kind of thing.
Liz, what exactly is the township charging for these items?
We are below township costs. I don't have a copy of their schedule.
I think we should get some estimates of cost, estimates of what they would charge us to do it, and then we can bring it back to you.
That's a good idea.
You talk about a program, I mean, a special program just for tracking?
Well, no. So the townships use the S&amp;A, which we have, for accounts payable, accounts receivable, that kind of thing. If we were to add building onto that, it would be like $20,000.
I think we could do a simple access database.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we should be able to do something fairly simple.
And then you can pull queries from that anyway.
I would probably start just by trying to track it using some existing, you know, spreadsheet or simple database or something like that first and see how it goes, because it sounds like right now we're not really even captioning or tracking those things that effectively.
Well, no, I mean, I'm doing the best I can with the time I have, so I have to do everything manually with building permits. So in the meantime.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it doesn't, the cost just isn't justified to take on from BSNA for that, for the amount of permits that we get. So either, you know, an Excel spreadsheet, but that's still manual, you can't do, I mean, at least in Access, and you can make a pretty basic access database and query from it all different cuts and slices and dices.
And I'm a little bit familiar with Access, but not a lot familiar with Access. And there are companies out there who do communities of our size for a greatly reduced cost. I mean, it would be like having our documents on demand cost.
Yeah, well, to be honest, I would like to see more than, to go beyond that, because I've been finding that there's a lot of things that we enact as council that it seems that you look, you look years down the road and you say, hey, I thought that we did this back at that date or something back then, and we have a really hard time tracking down a lot of things that we have enacted and taken action.
The software that I'm hoping to look at would, it would let me know, it would automatically print if there was a building permit about to expire. We could track ordinance letters, we could track, you know, when things are expiring, that kind of thing.
How about like ordinance amendments and things like that when we pass them, and when they go into effect and things like that, and postings?
That I don't know. But I, I'm not even worried about that at this point, I just.
Well, even for right now, I mean, Larry, would you be proficient in doing like an Excel spreadsheet to kind of get her going with that, maybe?
I think Access would be better. A database.
How familiar are you with Access?
I'm a little bit familiar.
Because, you know, to be honest, I would, I would be more than happy to spend some of our training money to get you some training classes and stuff to become more proficient in some of those tools that can help you with.
Sure, I mean, if it's something we can do in-house, I'm more than happy to do it, but to renew a building permit for $2.50, just.
Yes, we need to at least get enough to cover our own internal processing costs.
So it's kind of two different discussions, bringing up the secondary that you realize is important once you address that. So I think, like Dale has mentioned, to kind of get an idea, put together what our local communities do, make sure we're not, you know, when we changed the prices last time, we were conscious of making sure what's around us, and making sure that those are similar.
I will say, in my day job, I deal with some of the northern communities, and we're really low, so we could justify, raise it. So when, I can talk to Dale too, but yeah, that, this is pretty low, so.
And I know we raised them, well, time flies, so I'm not even gonna begin to guess, but I know we raised them a while ago, because we were low. And, you know, what about, I mean, the thing is, some of them, and I don't have the, well, I guess I do here, some of the prices, you know, to get a new hot water heater, you know, X amount of dollars, what about instead of raising the prices of the permit, that maybe we extend the permit time, so we're not, you know, they're not expiring before they get their inspection. So I don't know what a typical one, I don't know if they're a 15-day.
It's on a six-months base.
Every permit's a six months, okay, okay, all right. So I was thinking, well, maybe if we just extend it, instead of raising the prices, because sometimes it's like, you can get permit fee overdone, you know, and it's like permit, 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 and to raise that, I hate to do that to the taxpayers. I mean, it's like, it's a lot of money to already replace furnaces and hot water heaters and everything. So I thought, well, maybe we can just extend it, even though it's a six month.
But you would extend something for six months for $2.50.
Right, I'm saying if we just put, is there, can we, and I don't know this, what our rules are for the building code stuff, but is there a way that we can add, let's say we give them 10 days, you know, we have six months and 10 days, can we, can we do that without affecting the coating? Okay, that's what I'd like to know first before. I hate to raise permit prices, even though I understand that we may be low, and I don't know what the other communities have, because we don't have that comparison, but if we could just, if it's something as a council that we could do, that we just do an automatic extension just to help the residents be able to get maybe, get it done, something to consider maybe.
Though, that most home improvements for residents probably would be completed within that six-month timeframe, so it's just a matter of timing.
Well, I don't know how many of them, we're doing extensions. I mean, but if we're getting extensions and they're not being done.
How many do you think we do a year in extensions?
Well, I have four sitting on my desk right now.
Out of how many?
In a year.
Yeah.
Well, last year was a really high year for permits. So I would, I would say, I would say two to four a year need to be extended.
So that's the only reason we're changing.
A total number of last year, like, again, last year was a really high year between all of our permitting, I would say we probably did maybe 75 permits.
And only two to four needed an extension?
Yeah. But I'm still not gonna change.
I think the $25 is reasonable then, in that case. It's not a high percentage of permits that need extension.
Depends on what you put in your house, that it's like, it's already, you already spent a lot of money on that, you know, the 25, you know?
Well, compared to my.
It's all relative, right?
17,000 for my, well, I wouldn't mind the 25.
I know, but everybody's indifferent, everybody's indifferent, you know?
From a management standpoint, what does it take to extend someone's permit? So if you wanted to extend it by two weeks or six months, is it a matter of just changing the date, or do you have to do all new paperwork?
So I have to currently, I have to manually look up all of my permits. I have a binder for electrical plumbing, and I look at it periodically to see if anything's coming up.
I know.
To expire. I have to send them a letter. They have to make contact with me. So, you know, it's time, really.
Well, it's time to search out if a, if a permit is becoming due, if you will.
Type up a letter, mail it out, follow up, you know, make sure they follow it up with me, and then extend it. And then the extension is automatically another 180 days.
And then you receive something from them, or them come into the office and then utilize that time again, and then extend it.
I understand it's more office work, but to trustee Skornika's point, our village residents are already believe that we're overtaxed by paying both village tax and Brandon Township tax, right? So from that perspective, I have a hard time increasing fees to them.
Okay.
Because of that, but that's my opinion, I mean.
Yeah, that's my opinion too, I just.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's fine, I'm just.
Oh, no, we, well, it's something to, you know, to look at, I just, you know, just.
It's, I mean.
I would like to see what other communities do, so we can get an idea, I mean, we don't, obviously, if everybody's 50, we're not saying go from 25 to 50, but what does everybody else do to give us an idea when we make our decision? Is anybody else interested?
Right, well, that's what.
They said we're low compared to Brandon, I think, is what.
Right, but we're a village as well. I mean, you know, what does Axford do? You know, like.
Inspection fees are inspection fees. It shouldn't matter whether you're a village or township or a city or whatever.
Well, yeah, I agree with that, right, otherwise, it's, yeah, it should, inspection fee to inspect my pool should be the same whether I live on this street or this street, should make a difference.
And to be honest, you know, I don't see this as increasing the fees as a form of taxation, because it's just, you know, you're paying for a service. As a taxpayer, if I don't have any improvements, I'm not paying any fees. But if I have to make an improvement, then I, it's, I'm okay with paying a reasonable fee to cover the cost of processing that.
But you're covering the cost basically of the inspector. You're not make, we're, the village is not making any money.
Yeah, exactly. And so $2.50 for an extension doesn't even cover a postage stamp hardly, mail it out, you know?
So what would we like to see at this point?
I think we should table this till we get the other information from the other communities.
So we're looking for a compilation of local communities and table that for February.
Can we make a motion for that then? I think we need a motion table.
We're gonna postpone and not table.
Postpone, yes.
Sure, that would be great. Motion to postpone.
So who's making the motion?
I make a motion to postpone the building department fee schedule until local municipal competitive fee schedules are obtained from local communities.
Support.
Do you want township, villages of similar size?
Local, well, I would say local and, I think both.
Okay.
You know, because it's like, what?
Goodness, Clarkson, Lake Orion.
Yeah, I think that we don't need an overabundance, just so, yeah.
Just real quickly, one thing that I'm really curious about, if the township is paying all that money for that program, I mean.
Why aren't we piggybacking?
Well, why aren't we piggybacking? But the other thing is, well, the thing is, I mean, it costs a lot of money to buy that program, right? So how much are they charging, you know, I mean, how many?
Well, keep in mind, it's the township and not a small little village of 1,400 people.
Any other questions, comments?
Because it's like one database, we can't mingle with that.
Motion by Councilman Skornika, supported by Councilman Robinson, to postpone to the February meeting and gather the dead. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Next up is the Village Master Plan, and that will be continuing with our feedback and discussion this time.
Well, I did receive feedback from Oakland County Commissioners. They did have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, tomorrow, was canceled for lack of quorum, so they send me and, sent me an updated one, which I provided to you this evening, as well as from the Oakland County Road Commission. Those are the only, that's the only feedback I received at this point. I think we have until February 3rd.
Is that the 63rd day or the 64th day?
Yeah.
64th? It'd be the day after, because it's 63, right? Because it could come in.
63 is February 3rd, I believe.
So their meeting, their next meeting's gonna be after the 63-day period?
Yes, so for Oakland County Commissioners, specifically Scott Crey, the senior planner, had originally sent me one thing that he was sure the Commissioners were gonna look at and take his feedback accordingly, and then we had to cancel their meeting, so he sent me an updated one, which I provided. It has strikeouts in red, basically saying, I think it's for lack of quorum, and we'll be getting our feedback. And I honestly haven't had a chance to review Oakland County's feedback. The Road Commission was just requesting an update to a map.
I'm sorry, Liz, did you say that he provided a copy with red markups?
I've given it to you this evening.
Oh.
It says new business. It says new business, it's a talk, and we need to have the plan to be back in discussion.
I think there's some great information there from the county. It's very self-explanatory. They go through it in detail and then point out to, on page seven and eight, where those changes are recommended specifically after they detail what they're thought after this comment. But obviously, we were more than able to reach out with any questions on that, beyond the feedback that they gave, and compile all that together.
So there's no action needed at tonight, it's just my eye.
And item D is the Sherman Park Ball Garage, the DNR grant, any updates on that?
Well, I have provided to you in your packet, we don't officially have the grant yet. We've been recommended to receive the grant, but the DNR says so you can start spending a week. And one of the things that we're required to have are engineered or architectural drawings of the ball garage and the parking lot, the things that we're getting ready to update. So really what I'm seeking tonight is request to seek bids for an engineer or architect to provide that information.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the clerk's office to seek bids for engineering drawings for proposed improvements to the Sherman Memorial Park Ball Garage.
Support?
So I got to ask you, isn't there a, a plan already out there? Because didn't we submit the initial plan or conceptual plan for application of that?
We did. We did like rough, you know, on the computer, you know, this is, this is what we would like to see. But now, they said, now you have to have architectural certified drawings.
Yeah. We, we just had a rough sketch.
Yeah.
Originally.
Yeah, if you actually move forward, then you need some actual engineering drawings.
Correct. I would like to point out too, that there is, there will be one expense that was not a part of the permit application, which is there is a utility pole that is just outside of the ball garage. And with this particular grant, we are required to have underground electric to the building. So that will be an additional expense. I will contact DTE, our contact, to find out what that will cost, but that will be separate above and beyond the grant and everything else.
So we obviously have a budget to work with, and then the bids would have to go up in, obviously to fit the budget so that we're not exceeding any, you know, budget dollars, right? Cost overruns, if you will.
Well, that was never anticipated, though, earlier on.
Are you saying engineering or pole?
Well, I, I don't know how we're going to separate out, but there's a cost of that actual, that labor and, and materials to do the work, right? And then there's the cost of the design, and then the cost of burying it, and that all's got to fit within a budget, right?
Yes. Well, yes.
Worst case, if we go over a little bit, we got to pay-
Right.
-any excess.
So the-
So the motion is for the engineer drawings.
Right, and that can be paid for through the grant. We can pay for that through the grant, the engineer drawing.
Right now, we're just, we're just looking to approve you to seek bids.
Correct.
So no money involved at this point.
Correct.
Hey, we're, we're requiring a minimum of how many bids? Three? Three or more?
I think they say minimum three, if it's ten thousand dollars or more.
Yeah, minimum of three, but I can, I can get more than three if you want.
Just put it out for business.
I think three is fine.
Any further questions?
Liz, have you, have you asked Fred anything on this? What his, what his take on this is? Because he's with that, with the township park, I'm sure he's had to do pretty tight schematic designs.
Right, I mean, I've been in contact with Fred about process and procedure-
Right.
-just because this is new for me.
Right.
And I did contact, we do have an engineer that we've been using, Keith, for some stuff around the village. They don't do buildings.
Okay.
But they did give me names and phone numbers of two people who will do engineer drawings or, you know, draft drawings.
I have a what-if question, and that is, say this underground electrical is all astronomical, we're, what's our liability as far as proceeding with the grant?
We will not get the grant if we don't bury those lines.
When was that brought forth, by the way? Because that's the first time we, we're hearing about that.
They did their site visit, because I applied for two different grants for the same thing. And Mary Carlock, when she came out for the site visit, looked at the pole and said, if you do get this one grant in particular, it will require that you bury the line from that pole to the building. And now, yeah.
What's the approximate distance?
Uh, Bob, is that maybe twenty-five feet?
I'm going to rest on what you've got to say on that.
As far as the distance is probably-
As far as, as doing, doing the underground line, you know that layout there from where they want that pole to-
They have a foot wide, I'm sure.
Okay.
It might not be as much as you think.
That's what I'm wondering with you.
Yeah, I can't imagine it could be too high.
The transformer's there, you just got to get it in the tube, and a tube could get it underground.
Maybe this is the start of, yeah.
The start of the underground.
We have that as, as an objective.
Two thousand twenty, we did it.
Look how fast we got that done.
Apply for more grants.
That would be, that'd be awesome.
All right. Any other questions at this time? All right. Can we have a vote on that, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, Liz, for looking into that. Next up on our unfinished business is the pro temp. That is item A. And I am looking to recommend Dan to continue to stay in that position, if you will, at this time.
Support?
It's not a motion?
Well, sorry. My bad.
I make a motion, to continue with, to appoint Dan as the pro temp.
Support.
Any questions? Any discussion?
I'm sure you're not interested, right, Mark?
All right.
You've just got such a level head, I appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Wait for you. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
We got that settled.
Here's our joint parks and rec master plan, the meeting reminder, which Ted already gave us a chance to have that reminder, but anything further that we need to know or be ready or?
This show up, but I, I'm looking, I'm looking for a pretty complete plan, so, yeah.
Any questions from anybody else at this time?
My concern would be any changes between the last time we reviewed the plan and the recent plan. So you did say that there were some red highlights on changes, so that would be my only concern. It would be nice to know what those changes are prior to the meeting so that we're not, you know, mulling them over-
I get that.
...in front of the cameras, right?
Especially that we rushed through so fast to get it done, you know, a month ago, so, right?
Are you aware of anything significant that changed since?
All I know is whatever, whatever I had, the primary copies we worked from to make the changes, Dale had done changes, Liz had done changes, Tanya had done changes that I got. And every, and there's, and the changes they made were not just their changes, the changes that, that were made, were, were any council member that put in a change. Do you know what I'm saying? So it wasn't just Tanya did hers and we got hers. If you had a change, Dan, that was incorporated into what we looked at.
Right. I mean, if councils as a whole decided those changes, but the biggest concern I have, just speaking myself as a trustee of Ortonville Council, is that any changes that would be associated with Ortonville would be of concern of all of council, and that, those are the ones I would be concerned about.
All right.
So if nothing's changed with what we'd already addressed in terms of things relevant for the village, then it should be okay for us, hopefully.
I hope so.
So would have been nice to have gotten a new draft up front.
Agreed.
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier.
Any other questions before tomorrow evening? All right. Thank you. Item C is the draft emergency plan. Would you like to update Dave? Or did you want me just to throw it out there? What would you like to do?
You can.
All right. So Dave continues to work really hard on that. I know there were some changes at Oakland County, so we kind of put a pause where we were at. You said twenty bonus pages now that are added, so we'll-
Twenty-six page document to a forty-six page document.
So that will come to us as soon as a draft is together with the new version, the new and improved twenty-twenty version. Thank you.
Now, is that a combined emergency plan for the entire community, Brandon, Ortonville, and everything?
Just for Ortonville.
It's just what we would.
Brandon, Tom, that's all.
All right. And D is our ready development, ready community. The next step after the approval of that in December is to appoint an office staff and for it to go to the planning commissioners to bring us, a planning commissioner to look at appointing as well. Office staff wise, Dale had shown an interest that he would like to go through the training for that. Planning commission did not meet in January. They're going to be meeting next week, so that will then come to us for February. So it's up to you whether we'd like to separate it and do office staff now, or we'd like to wait till February and look at them both at the same time. You guys decide.
There's no hurry. We can do them all at the same time.
Yeah, doesn't make a difference, you know? Okay. All right. So we will save that for February. Like I said, they'll meet next week, and they will bring forth somebody they would like to-
Oh, so we don't want to just make the appointment? Because we could, we could do that at tonight's meeting. We could just make the appointment.
Of what? Dale?
Dale, but we can appoint the planning commission representative.
We don't know who it is. They have a ballot to decide who they'd like to, who would be interested in doing it.
We can do that. We can make that appointment.
I, I would prefer to let the planning commission pick the member that they would like to have participate.
Only because, well, there's, there's, you know, one that hasn't been reappointed, and then there's, you know, a couple concerns. I guess we can wait to see what they bring forth, but I think we, you know, we need to look at that, because we should only have one village council rep on there to, instead of, you know, paying for two meetings from a village council perspective, so.
I'm not comfortable appointing somebody before we talk with them to see if they're interested in doing it or not. I mean, it's quite a commitment, education wise and time wise.
Yeah.
And it's somebody that we, you know, would like to make sure they're committed, because once they have the training, obviously-
Sure.
-they have to be available for us. So I would like to wait, you know-
That's fine.
-till somebody.
It's just because it says that we had the liberty of doing it, so, all right.
Because they were supposed to meet in January, but unfortunately, they weren't able to.
Okay.
But, like I said, I don't know if you want to separate away.
Well, it sounds like there's business for February for them, so.
Yes, we'll be good next week. All right, so that's that update. And item E is the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, continuing to focus on the signage for that, and wayfinding is working their way with that. Anything you wanted to share?
Well, one thing, at first, when I read that, I thought, you know, I would try to group the wayfinding committee together and everything and see what we could do, but, you know, because where we're at with wayfinding and we're waiting for this initial grant to come in, you know, that's why I was waiting for Matt Bailey to come back with me and all that, before I scheduled anything. This is something that needs to be done, especially, you know, by the time, you know, council's going to have the, you know, the input and the final say. Why can't council decide pretty much now what type of sign? I mean, we basically need, what, three or four signs around the area, and why can't they be a park-related nature sign like what we have in the rest of the community?
Do you, I, I agree with that. Did you want me to bring like a couple of quotes for the next meeting? I'm assuming temporary signage for the wayfinding, and then, did you want rules and regulations attached to that?
That's a really good question, because I think for council, you know, we, we got to have something at least that relates us to our regulation or whatever that we have put in place, you know, that somebody was going to be able to look it up. Or do we want a basic description of what they can and cannot do on the sign? So I think if the council as a whole, we needed this sign.
I don't think you're at a point yet to have that narrowed down as to what the parameters of the sign should be, or what they should look like. My recommendation to you is that you hold off and not-
We haven't had them for so many years, I would agree.
-get a more thorough evaluation.
And our current parks are different. Each one is different. So what style would we go with and which one would be correct? And that's my concern, is continuing to have a different one at each location.
Now, Mark, I think I saw in the township minutes that they, there were, they mentioned something about that they were working up a logo for the signage, or something. I don't know if they meant a logo or a template or something. Do you have any more information on that?
Well, um, we all met, we all met as a whole, you know, for the most part, and the only group that was much further ahead than us was the school system. They'd been working on a lot of their own wayfinding for quite some time, but the township hasn't really done much. The library's been working out some stuff, so we were just hoping to tie everybody in all together, if possible, you know what I mean? And, and everybody was pretty receptive of, of doing something in that nature. So that way, we didn't have all these different mixes of signs and, you know, colors and all that, you know, we kind of joined together.
One over two feet.
Yeah.
Any, any idea about how long before there might be some kind of a, a template for the sign format?
This is gonna, this is gonna drag on for a while, from what we all gathered. It's not going to be overnight. It's just letting everybody know, and that everybody on wayfinding is aware of it. It just, it's going to be time consuming and waiting for the grants to come in and all that as well, you know?
Well, I, I, I think that I would agree with what Dale was saying, is that at this point, that park's been there for how many years without any signage?
I know, but we have issues and-
Or have not made any changes to-
And like Lieutenant Glover said, he said he can't enforce anything if we don't have it like posted and all that.
Well, we have ordinances.
Correct.
He didn't say he couldn't enforce it if it's not posted. He only said he can't enforce unless we have an ordinance, and we have an ordinance. So he can enforce it, is my understanding.
Yeah.
We don't need to put a sign up for him to enforce it.
Okay. Well, I'm here, it was making a statement that we've been waiting on wayfinding, and I don't want that to be the case.
Oh, no, I don't mean it in a negative way. In other words, we handed it off to the next step.
I, I think I would rather wait and do it once and have the right thing up once, rather than pay for temporary and then have to repay to redo them again later.
I know Dale had also mentioned that he had some sort of structure of how it should be verbalized in the past, and I don't know if you've come up with any final draft on that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
I'd like to say something. You know, having, having a sign to include all, and I'm glad Lieutenant Glover's here, because we can ask him, but if, if we had a simple sign that was certainly park-like, natural-looking, that said basically, use in accordance with ordinance number so-and-so, that, that's simple. It's not a big four-by-eight sheet and you have to have, you know, item one, two, all the way through, whatever, what you can and can't do. To me, it should be as simple as that.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Get it done. It's been dragging on for years and years. Let's do something.
We can always have a, a short flyer in the office that would have more details on exactly what's permitted and what's not, that anybody could pick up if they wanted to.
So, so are we in agreement that maybe we have somebody look at at least a, a park-like, natural, natural sign, just the actual sign, and then if we're talking about a simple logo or maybe have our, and then the small and, you know?
Just a brief outline.
Wildlife preservation park, use in accordance with-
I'd prefer to wait for wayfinding, but if the rest of council wants to-
Wayfinding, I have a feeling it's going to take a lot longer than we all hoped for. I'm just throwing that out there.
This is something simple. This is something simple.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's, it's up to council.
Maybe the, maybe Liz can check out some options for that.
That would be great, like you originally offered, Liz, you know, just to see, you know?
If it's the consensus of the council, I'm happy to do it.
I think if we were to pursue a temporary sign, what is a good idea is to bring forth examples of temporary signs.
Right.
So we know what we're talking about.
Well, that's what she did offer.
What, what do the local parks look like? What is ideal? What is common? Before we, you know, make assumptions, and then we don't want to change it totally when it comes to wayfinding. Now we have one up for six months and a year, and then we totally change it, try to come up with an idea.
But I think we need to keep in mind, it's just a temporary sign. I don't think we need to, I mean, you know, to the gall-
Could be a metal post with, you know, just a, you know, I mean, signs, street signs and all that, Bob? I mean, they're not that expensive, are they? You know, something that size?
There's companies that can make it however you want.
I mean, Amazon nowadays, and it's like local. I mean, it's nothing to get signs. It's just- It's just...
Well, if we have a couple, we already have a couple of existing parks. We could try to make something similar to what we already have, so at least it's not inconsistent with what we have.
I, I agree. That's why Liz was going to propose, she offered that earlier in the discussion, so if, I mean, I'm asking that Liz would be able to do that, pursue that. Does everybody else agree, or?
I think it's a great idea. Let's get started on it.
I'd just like one question. We say temporary. Someone commented libraries working on something? Somebody commented that the school system's working on something? Are they working on their own design or what they want in signs, and then the wayfinding is going to go design it for us? Or, or us, as Ortonville, looks at our signage, just like the Brandon schools are doing?
We're the trailblazers. They follow us.
And we say, here's what we'd like for our parks?
So you, you misunderstood me. When I said temporary, I meant temporary until wayfinding comes up with what wayfinding has decided.
That's why I don't think that we really need to, we, yes, do we want it to look decent? In my opinion, yes, we do. But do we need to be concerned about matching it with something else? No, because they're going to be replaced when the wayfinding does it. I think we need to, to get a temporary sign in place and get it posted, period.
That's attractive, and...
It's because we don't need to match it and all that. I mean, that's, if we were matching it to wayfinding because we already established wayfinding and stuff like that, yes. But right now, we just want to get it posted, get it out there. Springs around the corner. Thank goodness. And it's like, let's get this in so it's ready to go.
Yep.
I don't think it really matters to match the other parks and stuff like, at this point, only because we're looking at a bigger project down the road for wayfinding.
And Dale, did you have feedback? I know you mentioned a thought of maybe waiting. What, do you have feedback on that or thoughts on?
Say that again?
You mentioned possibly it might be a good idea to wait. Do you have feedback or thoughts on that as to why you think that might be a good option?
Well, because, because of many of the things that have been said here, the comment that the schools have an idea of something, you know, the township has an idea of something that they want, the town has an idea of something they want, we could end up with six temporary signs of all these different sources. And at this point in time, because there's some time since, since you've had a sign that is consistent, I think that you just wait and do it right, and have, have whatever the sign is that everybody can agree on. And if it turns out that for some reason, the schools and the township can't agree, then the village can have its own distinct sign. There's nothing, nothing wrong with that either.
Well, for what it's worth with the wayfinding, the village has offered it to, you know, the township and the school system and all that. We brought them in to say, hey, do you want to join in on what we're initiating, so...
And that's fine.
But, but I don't, I, I think it's gonna be a minimal cost to put together three signs outside, just so that, you know, it's also telling people, hey, come on in, use the park and all that, but within these confinements, you know?
It's just, it's what it's called, temporary signage, because we know that the wayfinding, a bigger, better project sign is coming down the way to, to take the time to match it and do all that, I think is, is irrelevant, in my opinion, at this point.
I don't want to see us go another year and not having anything posted there and all that, you know, because by the time wayfinding gets, you know, and then wayfinding, we have to bring it all back before council again and agree on that, and it's just gonna take some time. I know what it will as well.
Let's minimize some of this red tape.
Yep.
All right. So would anybody like to entertain a motion then to direct Liz to pursue estimates?
I'd like to make a motion to have Liz, our village clerk, seek out estimates on three to four signs, and the signs should be such that they are at least natural-looking. We're not talking about, you know, fluorescent this, big green this, you know, just something very simple that's put on a wood post.
Support.
Can we discuss?
Yes. Motion on the table by Councilman Ushman, supported by Councilman Robinson. Questions, comments?
I guess my question is, what do, what do you want these signs to say?
We're gonna address that after the fact, and council's gonna agree. But Dale was gonna write that up.
I mean, what do you, what do you think on this, Mark? Are they gonna be like welcome signs, come on in? I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, why not? I mean, you know, but it has to say in accordance to...
I got to at least state this. My concern is, right now, and I've been in that preservation park for, God, three times for hour-plus each time, I think in its existing state is dangerous for people to be in there. I think, I think somebody's gonna get hurt.
You've been promoting for everybody to go in there.
No, I'm not. No. I'm promoting for, for a groomed trail so people can go in there and use it. It's a big difference on that.
But now you want to close it off to the public because it's too dangerous. And it's been open to the public all along.
Well, I'm just telling you.
That's your opinion, right?
The current motion is for signage.
Common sense. Common sense, Dan.
At this point, do we have any discussion on the signage?
Well, Lieutenant Glover has been raising his hand.
That's the whole thing that I was thinking the whole time we've been up there talking about this sign. First of all, what are you gonna put on that signage?
Right.
Is it gonna be at your own risk? And who's gonna clear that park once you put that signs up for everybody to enter that park at the risk? Because I can tell you right now, it's not gonna be the sheriff department going in there every single night to make sure that park's cleared.
Yeah. No one's gonna be in there. No one's gonna be in there clearing the park.
So are you saying...
So as soon as we post it, then we gotta clear it.
Have to clear it every night?
No.
Well, you just, I think it's open, dusk to dawn.
Warning has come up that the sheriff department's gonna patrol that park, and, and I can assure you that it's not gonna be the case. We are not gonna walk through that park every night to make sure that park's cleared.
Right. No, no. That was never my...
Like, that's it.
I, I think it'd be more like passive enforcement, where if somebody says, hey, we see this activity happening in the park, we would then...
There's a fire back there, something like that.
We don't need anybody...
But not to patrol it.
They would ask you to do something without having some cause to go there.
I need to come up with something appropriate.
Dan, that's a groomed trail. That's what I'm promoting.
But I, I mentioned at a meeting or two ago about the danger of it there, about the trees that have fallen.
What I want you to understand is, I'm not saying that that's safe right now.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm saying it's dangerous right now.
As I mentioned, a meeting or two ago about the danger in there, about, you know, some of the fallen trees, just to be sure that it was safe and, you know, I, I made the comment, we, you know, haven't done anything to get in there to, and even though I, it's a preservation park, there's certain ways to do that, but nonetheless, you've still gotta make sure that things are safe.
And that's a, and that's a groomed trail. And if, I know that, did you see...
Hold on. The first step of this motion is whether we would like to see a sign or not.
Did you see the picture in the paper Saturday on Atlas Park? No, I'm just, I wanna finish this. Did you see the picture in the paper on Atlas Park?
I did not.
That's a groomed trail. Do you want to see it?
No, I, I'm agreeing with you, Pat, about the safety.
What I want to make sure on, on this, because this is what I'm concerned about. This is what Pat George, this is what we're afraid of. This is what he said, let everybody in there. I did not. I said, what we want to do is develop groomed trails in that park. That's what I said, and, and that was shut down. It is dangerous in that park.
No, and, 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 Pat...
I thought I heard you several months ago saying how beautiful it was and how, you know, pristine it was, and how everybody should enjoy the hiking. And now you did a flip-flop here, Pat.
No, that was in your world.
Yes, you did.
No, you, you, go on, go on camera. You show me what I said then in public. I did not.
Okay. Excuse me, gentlemen. Let's focus back to the signage.
Not even close, Dan.
So back, back to the signage. To me, it's Ortonville Preservation Park, use at your own risk in accordance with ordinance number so-and-so. That's the way it should be.
Dusk to dawn.
So our first step is, do we want to pursue a sign or not? That's what motion is on the table, not what is going to be on the sign at this point. The motion on the table is, do we want to pursue the price of a sign, the layout of a sign? Not what is on the sign, yeah.
We're not worried about what it's gonna say yet.
That would be next. Right. So, and I'll throw my two cents. I personally am not interested in spending money at this point, knowing that it will change, knowing that we're not ready. That's my personal opinion. Council decides as a whole, but I did want to throw my two cents in there as well. Any other discussion on whether we are going to pursue a sign estimate?
It doesn't hurt to look and see what's available, so...
All right. So all in favor?
I...
Opposed? All right. Motion carries seven zero to pursue estimates for signage.
I think that we, we need to also be aware that estimates are gonna vary depending on what we'd want it to say. So to say that, we'll decide what we're gonna put on it after the fact, because signs, you know, four-by-six, you know, twenty-four-by-twenty-four, whatever, it's gonna vary depending on what we're gonna put in it, so...
Why would it vary?
Because the more words, the more, the bigger the sign. I mean, the...
If we quote a certain-sized sign, if we want to fit more words, they have to be smaller, that's all.
All right.
I would just, I would just go for a certain sign that we think would be enough.
Okay.
So Liz is gonna bring something back to us in February, and we can move on to the next step after some thought.
I'm happy to.
But for now, we're gonna move on to the scheduling of our ZBA, and the two dates that we have in front of us is February 10th, 2020, or March 2nd, 2020, and both of those will be Mondays. And thank you for catching that, Dan.
Mark.
Mark? Mark? Dan's my favorite tonight. I'm blaming him for everything.
Do I need to move him over here?
I'm good.
So let's take a decision and vote.
I, I would prefer, for the sake of the resident, that they've been, you know, going on, it started in June, that we go earlier than later, so I propose the 10th.
10th.
10th is good.
Any concerns with the 10th?
My only concern is, and I didn't realize this when I was giving you the dates, we have to, I'm gonna have to find out if we had to, have to advertise that as a public hearing, because we've already had a public hearing for this resident, and if so, we're required for 14 days.
Well, today's what, what's today's date?
But, so to advertise for a public hearing, remember, it's not gonna get in the paper until Saturday.
You don't have to publish it as another public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we are looking at, at February 10th. All right. Any other discussions, questions on the date? All right.
Well, do we want to do the time? Is it gonna be a 6:00 PM also?
Would I speak to...
Because we need to let the residents know too, right?
I've been in contact with the resident, and I let him know that we're gonna...
Okay, so I would suggest then we stick with, because I think it's been 6 o'clock.
Six all along, right?
Well, I think we've been making them six because they were immediately preceding a council meeting at 7:00.
That's true.
So I would prefer to have it 7:00 because I work down in Iver Hills during the day. 6:00 is a little tight to get back, but I would like it 7:00.
I, I like 6.
I'm okay with 7:00, but...
I'll vote for you, Larry. I can't make it.
Well, I would like to go with 7:00 as I don't get off work till 6:30, but if nobody can make 7:00, we can do it.
Well, especially with the past voting, it's been so close, so if we could all be in, that'd be great.
7:00 it is.
On February 10th.
7:00 o'clock.
We have at least a majority that says 7:00.
And you will let us know if there's an issue with the homeowner?
Yeah.
7:00 it is.
Please. Okay, should we check our March 2nd date if the homeowner is not available on that date, or should we wait?
I would not be available myself.
So let's wait.
Just asking, why from the 10th, why from February 10th and not until the 1st? What was, I mean...
Because I didn't know. I was trying, first of all, I was trying to do a Monday.
Okay.
Because I know most people have their Mondays.
Okay.
And I was trying to do gaps in between all of the meetings.
Okay. Because then, I mean, we can, then you can just send an email for another meeting date if we need to do another meeting.
Okay. So February 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM, ZBA board meeting, or ZBA meeting. And C will be the bids for the zoning ordinance.
I've not even had a chance to look at any of this. As of this point, it's just for your information only. And again, the village manager and the building official haven't had a chance to review it either.
Well, we appreciate receiving those and looking for some feedback.
This is gee, um, I don't know. Just, Liz, you haven't looked into it all yet?
I haven't even had a chance.
Okay. Then I guess you can't answer questions about the...
They just received them. The one thing I can tell you for sure was, I think it was Carlisle, Orton, oh, I'm sorry, Beckett Raider wanted to schedule a conference call, and the building official said, we asked for what we wanted, and that's what their response was.
Do they have questions? Is that why?
Their conference call request was so that they may better understand our needs as well as our preferences regarding a proposal format.
They're just looking for how we want, how we want them to present it.
Yeah.
How do you want it to be?
Bill and I can present that to them.
All right.
All right. Well, next up is the Crossland Park Drain. Do you have updates for us on that at all?
Say that again.
Say that again.
Do you have updates for us with this park drain?
We are still in the process of getting quotes, getting information on it. The potential for how we would, would deal with, with the subject has to be decided. The drainage, we have drainage, and I've asked Bob to be here tonight because I wanted to go over with you some of what our proposals are and what feedback we have gotten so far, because we're at the step to take additional steps. So, if you would, I'd like to have Bob bring the council up to date.
Great, thanks.
Kind of start of how the, how the things should proceed as we go. Today I talked to, or I left a couple messages with Joe Gardner from the Oakland County Water Resources Commission guy, nice guy. As to the first starting point of getting things going is an erosion permit, which also requires a drawing for the erosion fence. And my call, the subject of when I called him and when I talked to him is going to be if he thinks that we need to actually apply for the permit or just put the fence up and see, and make sure, kind of like we did our due diligence to protect the river and the, you know, the ten cat tails that are down there and so on, but that's probably something that we should do first. And then, if he thinks that, he's gonna ask us, are we going to, is the village going to apply for a permit to do this project? And the engineers seems to think, Patrick McWilliams seems to think that this is basically a repair, there's gonna be a lot of new pipe, but it's just replacing and doing the same job as the old pipes, so he, he kind of feels as if we're not gonna apply for anything unless the resource commission says that we need to. Hopefully not. To get started with this, to get a permit for that, that's the first thing, gonna get stuff going, but it's gonna take a while. If, if, worst case, I mean, it can take two or three months just to get the, kind of, the pat on the back to go ahead and do this project. I don't know if you need to put it up for bids prior to, I think the first thing we need to do is, is talk to Joe, see what he says. I've, I've talked to him about other things in the village, and it should be, you know, hopefully just a simple phone call, and that'll be a start. And Dale and I have talked about the extra cost, I mean, you guys all have in front of you like that hundred, the bid for a hundred grand for the actual construction, plus or minus from that, but the construction of, of this, coming out of this pipe right out here in the parking lot and zigzagging its way down to the river for a hundred grand, but there's, that's just for the building, there's, let's see, a little paper in there with a bunch of scratch and all that, that's mine, 230 bucks for the application permit, the fee for the permit of the erosion fence, that's the first one. And all this stuff is in a paper that you have, but 1,500 bucks for the, possibly for the pipe insulation, for a permit for that, we may or may not have to do that. Then there's a 1,730 dollar, if it goes more than six months from the, right when you apply for it, if it goes more than six, then it costs you another 1,730 bucks if it goes past six months, which it could. A lot of this stuff moves slowly. It's gonna be like 1,750 bucks for a drawing for the soap fence, you know, because you gotta have that to per, to present it to the water resources folks. And then, you guys all know it about the 7,200 bucks for the, to complete the drawings, get the packets for, to present to the companies that might want to bid on the job. So, that's, that last 7, 7,200 on the bottom there, that covers possible permits and the bid packets, and then, he's going to help us through getting the right-of-way and getting, I mean, a lot of the laywork we're gonna have to do ourselves, somebody in town, to get the right-of-way secured and registered with the county, but he's gonna get us the papers lined up to do to get, to secure that right-of-way, to get the work going. So, but the main thing to do is get started, get first things first, because it can take some time.
I have a question for either you, Dale, or Bob. You know, we know this is, it just, it takes, nothing like this happens overnight, and I understand and all that, but we, we have families that have been really suffering. Isn't there any way that we can, you know, expedite it, you know, a little bit further, you know, faster than what we've been doing? I mean, because this has been haunting us since last year, well, before that, so.
Well, I think that, I think that we have, have expedited it to a certain extent. We have moved forward with getting the engineering. You all have authorized us to go out and get that engineering done. We've got an estimate of the cost, but it's just a pure estimate at the 10, the, is it 100,000?
Mm-hmm.
The $100,000 figure, but that is just a guess from the engineer. We won't know until we go out and get the bids. What we're at right now is we need to get some engineering firm to prepare us buildable documents. Documents that someone can take an engineering firm and can bid for us. That's when we're gonna know where we are. So, what we're asking for you, and we're giving you really the 100,000 figure and the rest of it, just so you have some idea that that's probably an outside amount that it could be, but it is something that you need to get in the back of your mind. If it is that much, where are we gonna get it from? And how are we gonna fund it? In the meantime, we need to, we need to get that engineering done. So, we're asking Keef and others to get us the amount that they'll charge us to prepare the buildable documents. That's not free for you tonight. We just want permission to go and get it.
So, are we gonna ask for three bids on that engineering work?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then, just to update for council and, and the public, where exactly is the route from the Crossman Park parking lot crock there? I assume that's where it's gonna start, right? Because we have good flow to that point. Where's the route gonna go?
Go ahead.
It's gonna, there's a crock right in the parking lot out here. It's the furthest crock from where everything begins. It's right here, it's kind of in the middle of, you know, like by the pub parking. Their thoughts are to go south out of that crock and go out toward Mill Street and turn and go west and stay between the sidewalk and the Art of Life Building. Those, there's a couple spruce trees that'll have to come out on the sidewalk. It's gonna be quite deep there, but as the further down we go, it kind of comes out of the ground a little bit, of course. And after we get out to the corner, like right at the corner of Cedar and Mill, it's gonna turn and go north again, and it's gonna go kind of line up to go do west between the building, building and Jamie's house, the yellow house that just got the new.
Should we take it up Cedar?
It's gonna go north, it's not gonna be on, into the road, and it's gonna, it's gonna be on, actually on this side of the sidewalk, and then it'll get up, it'll go north-a ways, and then it'll, probably only 200 feet or something. And then, then at that point, it'll turn and go under the road, and they have, we talked about boring under that instead of tearing the road up. So, that adds a little bit to the cost, but not, not a.
So, we're still talking about going across private property?
Yes. It's, the majority of it's private property.
And where does it hit the private property, once we hit Cedar Street there and go?
If you, no, before that, because this parking, as near as I can tell, and I haven't looked at it exactly in a while, but the parking, when they start going south right out of that structure, it's kind of angling just a little bit west, but mainly south. As it gets up there, 40 feet from the, from where it's gonna turn and go west, it's, it's already getting into private property, because part of that asphalt parking belongs to the Art of Life Building. So, it's gonna be into private, private property right then. And then it's gonna go three sides of that building, you know, on private property, and it's gonna cross the road, and then as soon as it gets under the road, it's going on private property all the way to the river then.
Do we know approximately what diameter pipe that we're gonna run?
18-inch.
I'm sorry?
18-inch. So, I mean, that'll take all the water it ever could possibly put out.
So, you had mentioned that someone said that we needed a permit, and then somebody else said maybe not because it's a repair. At what point does it start a repair, and what, what point are we doing new pipe? So, I assume that if we're gonna go from the crock south through the parking lot to Mill Street, that's all gonna be new, correct?
All gonna be new right from the beginning.
Right, and then what about Mill Street? Is there gonna be a Mill Street connection at that point? Has that become a repair, or is it all new?
All gonna be, when it go, it's gonna go west on Mill Street to the, right up in the corner somewhere, I mean, wherever it's comfortable for the guys to make their turn, because there'll be a structure there, and then it'll go in that vacant lot where that he lets the village use for parking and so on at the festivals and all.
And, and some of that's gonna be a judgment call from the water commission. They're gonna be the ones that sit down and finally say yea or nay. So, what we, what we're hoping our engineers will help us do, because they have good contact with, with the department, and we do as well, is that we'll be able to convince them that this is, should just be a renewal.
As opposed to permitting?
As opposed to brand-new.
A repair versus a new.
Is that route still going under that one property intercept?
Yep.
No. No, they, they wouldn't allow that.
Oh, no, oh, no, yeah, yeah.
Under intercept. Yeah. Can't do intercept.
So, it's, it's.
So, have we, how are we gonna approach the residents and where we're gonna do this work? Have we notified them that this work is being prepared?
Yes, we have, we have been in contact with them on a regular basis, telling them what we're looking at. We don't have details to give them at this point, but we've had some contact with them so they know what we're thinking about and why.
And then, I, I get the whole underground part, we get to Cedar Street, go back up Cedar Street, and by the one residence, we're gonna, we're gonna take it right to the, to the creek, but I thought that, that one section's gonna be like a biogram, so, or bio drain to where it's gonna be above ground, and it's gonna go through. Is that gonna be all underground right to, right to the creek then?
Yes.
Because of the extension, so there won't be the bioswale because you're going past it. Does that correct?
There won't be a bioswale involved in this at all.
So, what protects the creek?
Well, it'll probably, a good place to see what, what it'll be like is down here, when they did the post office stuff years ago, the, where it gathers up all the post office water, it goes under, under South Church Street, and then it goes into kind of a little retaining pond, and then it filters from there out into the river. Doesn't filter much when it's raining hard, because it just goes, it just flies right on through there. I'm not exactly sure how they'll do it, it'll probably go over some riprap and stuff before it goes in the river. I'm not exactly sure what that proposal will be, but it's not going to, it's not gonna go through a bioswale. It's gonna go pretty much.
But I thought the bioswale was the purpose of protecting the creek, so there is some other method other than the bioswale to protect the creek?
Yeah, and that hasn't been talked about much, partially because to keep it considered a repair, that's how the old.
If it's not, well, there now, yeah.
Well, like, for me, we talked about it, this is an investment for the village, right? And, and I think, okay, it's one thing to save costs, but sometimes permitting makes sure that whoever we do have the, do the work are gonna do it too. The engineer's drawing, they're gonna oversee, there's oversight and there's, you know, to make sure it's done right, and part of that done right, other than making sure you got the right grade, but is protect the creek. That's a huge, that's a huge part of the project.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna. Committing cost, like, what, 1% of the total cost of the project? So, I mean, that's not a big addition to the cost.
But it is something that we have to consider.
Yep.
We will, I guess, read.
So, I was just gonna say, meanwhile, I guess you've had a couple pumps standing by, you really had a flood situation a few weeks back and?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been, and we've pumped, we've pumped out a couple times since then as well. And what that does is kind of, in theory, it's hard to say if it is or not, but it kind of takes the pressure out of the water that's running in the parking lot down here. When we pump it out, it seems like it kind of slows the water flowing into her parking lot and freezing. So, when we keep, so, we're gonna try and keep it pumped out as, as, as time goes on more, you know? And it's easier, like as far as going into the properties on Church Street, I mean, also, you know, itself, it's just very little hole around the drain, and all of a sudden, boom, it's full, and it's over the, it's through the fence and over the little berm and into the yards. So, we're trying to avoid that now.
So, we're, we're taking basically all three of you guys to be able to, when we get rain like that, you guys are like pretty much locked in and pumping the water?
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, it's not, we have, we have the right stuff, it's not that big a deal to pump it out, I mean, just, you just keep the pumps fueled up and full of oil and let it rip, you know, it's not that big a deal.
But for you to spend all day Saturday out in the rain and the cold, ensuring the pumps is a big deal to us. I mean, that's your day off, and that should be spent.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, whatever, it's just gotta, it's gotta be, it needs to be done, and that, that's okay.
We appreciate you.
I have one simple question here, and I, I don't remember why, but why do we have to go back up Cedar, and why can't we just go right straight down Mill right to the creek by the bridge there?
Probably could, but it's not.
Because you got turns.
They're trying to keep this whole project out of the road. They're trying to keep it out of Mill Street, because that's when the cost, if you gotta go down and tie into the, the drains that are in the curb, now you're tearing out curb and sidewalk and asphalt and everything. This way, right now, the only asphalt that's gonna have to be repaired is right here in this parking lot. Other than that, it's gonna be off, it's not gonna be going through that other infrastructure and sidewalks and, and so on. The side, the only sidewalk that's gonna get ruined is gonna, is the one servicing the front door of the Art of Life Building. None of the village's stuff is gonna get, some, some of it wouldn't hurt if it got tore out, it'd be all right, you know?
And if you went down in front of Mary Allen's, her well is there, so you can't go between the sidewalk and her building.
Right. And, and you'd be getting into, unless you went completely down the road, then you're gonna get into having to rebuild her wall, her retaining wall.
I just, I didn't, I, all I know is once you, more turns you have, the more susceptible yards, you know, the blocking, etc.
Exactly right. The more structures have gotta be built and all that.
So, how soon do you think we can get the three bids?
I make a motion that the village office seek out three bids and have those prepared by our next meeting.
Say, well, we have one already.
Okay, well, two more.
So, we just need two additional.
Two more.
Smart.
All right, who supported it first?
I think I did.
Yeah, Larry did, then.
Okay. But evidently, we're all in support, that's great. He was damned.
Well, we all know we gotta get this done.
So, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Skornicka, supported by Councilman Hayden. Any further questions, discussion at this time?
Liz, would you read it back to me, please?
Well, what, what was the motion?
To seek two bids.
Two, two, two additional bids by our February meeting.
Or? Crossman Park Drain?
Yeah, I didn't put that in the motion. No, it's just to seek out two additional bids by our February meeting, because you're already putting it under the title, you know?
Okay.
So, I don't wanna beat this up, but the bid that we have now is, is, does protect the creek. So, it protects it from any oils, loo, huh?
It would collect and drain straight to the creek, right?
Because, yeah.
So, it wouldn't have no bioswale or anything.
Every structure's gonna have a little sump hole, and then third kind of, that's what that's for too, to protect.
But I thought that's what the bioswale does. It, bioswale protects the creek.
We don't have bioswales with this.
Yeah.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying, we need to do every, everything we can to protect the creek, and if bioswale's part of it, that should be part of the, the quote.
So, one of the main questions in our quotes, what you're looking for is how will we protect the creek?
Exactly.
With the quote that you're giving us.
And engineers, I, I mean, I would, I would rely on our, rely on our engineering when they're doing that, that they're gonna, you know, they should be very well of watersheds and things. And it's something that, no, I agree, that we make sure that when they're giving us those, that they have, that they have the route and how they're gonna go about doing it that route, and that's what we'll, you know?
If, if we're gonna do that, then we would have, we probably would have to go back also to Keef to ask them to add.
So, apples to apples, yeah.
About.
Is it safe to also say, because we're looking at hopefully doing a repair rather than pulling permits and doing all brand-new, our current system isn't doing anything special except for just draining the water, is that correct?
Exactly right.
Okay. So, if you're doing apples to apples.
But you do need to understand that if we go back and we ask that that bid be changed, it may well require us to go beyond the February meeting.
Oh, for sure.
To have, well, right, we can, we can at least get the two, but we'll, we'll play it by ear, we'll leave it the way it is and hope, and hope for the best.
Want to go on and that?
Because otherwise, it's like then we're getting into March, and if we have everything by February, then maybe we can make action to get it started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do, we gotta do it.
Yeah.
But no less ass of heat.
It's all legal. It might, you can, you can fancy it up and run it through bioswale, yeah, that's gonna keep a little bit less stuff going. But what he's proposing is legal.
Nothing more than what the current drains are already doing in the village.
And it meets DNR requirements and all that.
Not a brand new structure, where you gotta get the DEQ and all that.
All them involved.
It could take four, five, six months just to get the DEQ to say, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a good point, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not the engineer, but, you know, if, if you're saying what we have is, is right for the creek too, and it's comparable to all the other drains we have in the village, and it's no different, then we keep moving on.
Well, just on the south side, there's this big white pipe that sticks right out over the creek, and I'm sure that's a storm drain, right?
That's the, the sump pump and downspouts, just around on High Hill Mill. So, that, there's not a whole lot of water that comes out of that, mainly just some come from the basement.
Okay.
But it's set up, it's built, so if there's a, it's all cued up and everything.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other questions or comments on this current motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Dale and Bob, for all the work thus far, and we appreciate seeing what's going on. Item 12 will be the village manager's report, and that includes the DPW report and the manager's report.
I have nothing to add to what I've given you already.
I would definitely just like to take a minute to say thank you to all of the DPW staff. I know you reported how many hours and how many tons and the amount of time that you've spent. We've received, I've received nothing but excellent feedback, people stopping, people on social media, people emailing, people calling. We really appreciate it, and it doesn't go unnoticed that it's nights and weekends and all those other times, so. So far, so good. But I know, I know we all like that sentiment and hear it continuously, but we wanna make sure that you know that you're hearing it as well. And item 13 will be the public comments on anything that is non agenda items. Anybody have anything to share for us?
35 here. We talk about often. I've talked about it with Dale, I've talked about it with Mark quite a few times. The owner's son still is a problem for us. He was in jail this last time for a lengthy period of time, which was good for the village. However, as soon as he got out of jail, the next day, he committed a crime at one of our local stores, stealing, so we arrested him again. And a few days later, actually this past week, he, we, we arrested him again for trespassing, and that individual has a hearing coming up at the district court for probation violation. I took the, the first report that we had from him stealing to the probation officer in dump time, hoping to violate him so that they'd issue a warrant and we'd go pick him up again. That didn't happen, it, it doesn't work that way, it's go in front of the judge. The probation officers aren't allowed to, to do that at that level. I spoke to Dale a couple days at last, the end of last week, we talked about it, of ways of handling him. I went to the house on Friday and walked around that house, and all the tracks in the snow were old tracks, there was nothing, no fresh tracks. The shed and garage back in the back was locked, as well as the house, I walked up on the deck. I checked in the library, they haven't seen the guy in a week, so I don't know where he's at right now, but he is still a problem when he is here. I don't know, I, I can't just put the guy in jail, there, there are things that jail will take people for and things they won't, and there's a, a major concern by a, a couple of female residents, as, as well, as well as another male resident that's very close there, about him. And I personally don't think that he's that type of a guy, however, he's a heavy drinker, and he's a nuisance, basically. But me and Dale talked, I, I have no way of getting a hold of the actual homeowner, Mr. Betts, he's staying on the west side of the state somewhere. Some of the ties I had for a phone number for him and communication, he has cut those people off of his contacts with Facebook, and the only way that I know that you can and the only way that I know of that you can even reach out to him is through Facebook if he accepts it. So, my personal opinion is that, that we need to start, or the village really needs to start leaning on the homeowner. There's issues with the house, and obviously issues with him allowing his son to live in that house with, or live in that garage with no running water, no heat, no toilets. I've been in that building, there is, there's none of that in there. However, the father, the homeowner of the house, kind of, you know, blow smoke every time we talked to him about how he's gonna serve him and have him evicted from the property, all kinds of things. None of that ever happens. He has no intentions of doing that, in my opinion. So, I just wanted to update you on that. Because, because I, I mean, we're kind of at a dead end, short of lodging him when we can do it, but that's only a short-term fix.
So what do you think might be a good next step for us, you said to kind of lean on them, what would be appropriate?
Well, I mean, there's an ordinance, you know, as far as somebody being able to live in that building, and I think if you start going after the homeowner with that and start, and I hate to say it, but nitpicking him, not only with that and with the household items, maybe that person will go away. I mean, and the law enforcement side of it, you know, we, you know, we're able to do that to a point, and it tends to run people off, because they get tired of being in trouble and get tired of going to jail. I don't know about this guy, but I don't know what are the way to go about it with him, other than start putting pressure on the homeowner itself. He is, he is the, he is the one allowing this adult son to live there. And he doesn't allow him to live in the house, he's allowing him to live in the shed. I, we have no legal standing to remove him from that property until he commits a crime. Like I said, that's only a short time, or a short-term fix, because the crimes that he's committing are not capital offenses.
So we need to have the paper trail in place, that it is violating our ordinances with...
I think so. I mean, me and Dale spoke about it, and we, we're, I don't know what are the way for you to go about it.
Do we, do we have proof that he is living there when he is there? We have proof he's living there?
I've seen him in there, I rested him in there, I mean, I...
So we don't have to wait until he shows back up to issue an ordinance violation about somebody violating an ordinance, for example?
We already have an ordinance in place that will address this, so we just gotta move forward.
Dale's, I mentioned it, Dale, he's gonna take care of it on the tracking report, so. The blight issues and start pressuring the homeowner.
That's the only thing that I can think of, I mean, he's, he is the guy that's in charge, it's his home, he is the one allowing him to live there. I can't dictate who he allows to live there.
Right.
So.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Dan, that's great. Item fourteen will be the items from the trustees, and can we start down and coming, sorry?
In your packets, I asked Liz to provide you guys with copies for the census, it's information material, so please read it. And just a reminder, the census is April 1st. There's also information in the review, that's got some good information in there as well. Also, the, we're still having issues with residents with off-leash dogs and feces in the wildlife preservation park. So, we just wanna be mindful to please keep your dogs on a leash, and please do not allow your dogs to dump in the park. That's it for me.
I'd just like to also add that I'm really happy with everything our DPW's been doing, and now they've been taking care of everything, and all the work that was done with many of the council members and everything, with the luminaries, and also with the lighting and all that. I know a lot of times the lights went out, and you guys were really quick about replacing a lot of the Christmas lights and that. And, you know, and then also, you know, like Lieutenant Glover said, you know, he and I have been having a lot of communication about this issue on Naren Street, and so I appreciate all the efforts that he and Dale's been doing to help resolve the issue, so.
I'm good. I have nothing else.
Okay, well, Mark already said it very well, all the great job DPW's been doing. Besides that, based upon a few things, one thing I would like to ask council and our village staff to start thinking about is, I notice when I'm trying to find information that happened a few years back, or whatever, it's like I know something happened, I try to go back, find stuff in old records, and it's not easy to go back and find out exactly one particular resolution or motion was made, and what action happened afterwards. I was, what prompted this is about, I brought to the attention about sign operation and business on M-15 that was not in compliance with the variance or our ordinance. And I knew we had made a, an update to it, but it wasn't posted on our website, and I had a hard time finding it. I found the meeting minutes where it was adopted, but it did not include the language of that, and I still don't have the exact language of the amendment that was adopted at that July meeting. Not Ju, 2017 meeting, it was in February. So, I would like to have us start thinking about, is there some way we can maybe take a look at a way to try to get all of our documentation in our village, maybe somehow electronically, so that it is easier to sort, maybe have some kind of cross-referencing done, so it makes it easier for us to sort, find information. And also, in the process of reviewing that, ensure that all the latest information is available on the website, because it doesn't make sense to have our ordinances on the website, but the amendments that we pass, aren't there available for the public? That doesn't make sense to me, so.
The documents on demand allows you to go in and do a search, and it'll pop, let's say you say, I don't, even if you did dogs, it'll come up with everything that we talked about for dogs, or kinetic signs. You know, you can do a search, and it should bring up everything, if you're in our... Yes, you should be able to find, like if you're in, it should pull up any, the PDFs or whatever particular file you're in. If you do the search, it should pull up everything that's related to dogs, or fences, or signs.
But we don't have our packets uploaded that early, that's the problem. They're not online, at all.
When it came to anything prior to 2018, there was no packet information.
That's when we started putting them on there.
And as I said, is I could not find the actual wording of, it said hand...
But our minutes, our meeting minutes are out there, they go back.
Yeah, I had, I found in the meeting minutes.
You wanted to look at ordinance.
Was amended, but it did not include the language that was added to it. And I could not find that documented anywhere in documents on demand or on our website or anything.
Did you call me and ask me for it?
I asked Dale if he could...
I'm not pointing at you, cause in your spare 25 million hours a week, I know you don't have time for that.
Yeah, I did find and track down when it was approved, and I asked Dale if he could, see if he could find that when he had some time, because, you know, this is in relation to the ordinance violation I'd asked to investigate, yeah.
And also, if somebody's checking that, the plant materials they were supposed to have there has not been done, which has been raised a concern.
Yes, it has. It has been done for quite some time.
Little different than they said they were gonna do.
It's not different from what the village asked them, or the planning commission asked them to do. It is done.
But that, that's just...
You might not like it, but it's done.
What was it that she was saying, wasn't done? The plant information?
They're supposed to cover the guardrail with some pretties, and it's little short, barely, with space, large spaces in between, not quite what they mentioned they might do.
Well, we don't need another heritage garden looking either, on the guardrail.
Well, anyways, that was just one thing, is that I found, I found that it's very difficult to go back into the past and find stuff. I think that, and that's what Liz was saying in part, is that she has to manually go through lots of paper. And if there's some way to get more into electronic age, it'd be great for us to...
Well, we did do that, Larry, cause I haven't had any issues finding anything. I go in there and I search, and it comes up, so I don't know what you're looking for.
This went back to 2017, which I think is just before DOD started, right?
Right.
But I think we went back.
February, two dozen times? I just got on DOD for ordinances, and the amendment to the sign ordinance for kinetic signs is not on there. But I have a copy at my desk, really handy for you.
Okay, great.
And she'll get it on the website as soon as possible.
Okay, and, yeah, ordinance violations in general, also, it is a little bit discouraging to see some of them have been dragging on for well over a year, and we still don't have resolution. I, I'm hoping that, I know last year was kind of chaotic year with, you know, transition of village manager and all. I'm hoping maybe this year we can get a little bit back on track, maybe be a little more proactive with enforcing the ordinances, and be a little more timely in getting notices out when we do uncover...
That's what I've been saying all along on that tracking, that's why I suggest that we even do such a tracking report. So it's a, it's a quick, you know, see to where it's at. And if I'm in violation, I should get 30 days, just like you should get 30 days. But if somebody's on the game, and I get 30, but somebody's not on the game with you, and you get 60, 90, 120, we need to treat the residents all the same. Everybody gets the 30 days, the 14 days, whatever the case may be.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. George?
Yeah, I just wanna give a shout out to the DDA. Couple of weeks ago now, Main Street was in to do an evaluation on them. And the day itself was just a lot of, a lot of positive vibes, a lot of positive comments on the various sessions that we had, and very good turnout, and I just wanna congratulate them on that. That was, that was way, way cool to be there and a part of that that day, and that's it for me.
I have nothing to add, I'm done at this point.
Thank you.
Talking about going through paperwork and looking at things and looking back up, I kind of went through the end of the year items that have been dropped, old business, new business. I'm hoping we can kind of firm those up and get those back on track. One thing is the Fragmities with CISM. I know when you read through the Oakland County feedback, that was a concern with our master plan, so if we can kind of throw that back on our radar. Another thing was the DEQ permitting from the South Street dredging. That would be something that is a possibility to continue to see where we need our next steps with that. That also kind of fell off our radar. The Naren Street sidewalk, we had the engineering done, we paid for that, and we haven't kind of decided next steps beyond the fact that those quotes came back a little over our budget at that point. But we haven't revisited that since last year. Next thing, the lights at Crosman Park over here on our side of the parking lot are out, and I don't know what that entails. I know they're out on the building here too, so it's pitch black down this side of the building. So, I know one's township and one's village, but if we can kind of look at our share, please?
Are they lights on the pole?
They're the pole lights for us, but then the building lights for the township, so that whole pit thing is black. So it's both things.
Well, if Bob can get me pole numbers, I can get DTE on at least the pole.
Like back there in the corner? It's on a pole, that's all I know. I just looked up the pole and I said, oh, it's out.
Or is it all the way back here?
It's, yes, on the bill, or across from the building.
But things are falling off, then it's her responsibility to make sure they're on there.
It's in the box and everything, and we just gotta...
Okay. Like I said, I know the building is ours, but it was, like I said, two and one at the same time. And then, just an FYI, that the census boundaries report came back. We did fill it out, completed and sent it back. No boundary changes, obviously, in the village, so that we're on to the next step with our part in the census. And, I know Larry already mentioned the documents on demand online. Looking to see if that's something that we can get somebody in to do as a volunteer, is to scan those, load those, and get those up for you, not you. But if we can get somebody that needs some government hours, as a lot of people do, was my question, if that's possible.
It's not documents on demand that I need help with, but yes, I need help.
You want the list? Do you want 50 hours or 60 a week? But just thoughts, like I said, as we're going through all the things that kind of flopped off, but if we did something like that, we could get rid of boxes of paperwork at home if we had old packets available. And that's, again, I'm not pointing at you.
No, if I could get somebody to scan, like, old packets, that would be awesome.
I got some from the 90s.
Both college and high school level, both need government hours in a government building, and that would be fabulous.
But, but since documents on demand went live, I've been pretty consistent about keeping up to date with it.
I think it's just the packets that aren't the old packets, because, but I think the agendas, the meeting minutes...
Old packets, super old meeting minutes, super old resolutions, and old packets prior to 2018.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah.
When you say super old, how far back does DOD go?
2018.
I can tell you right now.
Seven, I think.
So the oldest thing that I have on documents on demand goes back to 2007, and they are agendas from village council. Doesn't include minutes, let me see if minutes. Minutes go back to 2008. Resolutions are, go back to 2016, so anything prior to 2016, they're not online. Cause, yeah, I have to take them out of the book.
So if we could get you some slave labor, we might do something.
An intern or a volunteer would be very welcomed.
How about some volunteer hours?
Yeah.
That's, that's my wish list for things that we had.
Sound like great agenda items.
You work with the village manager on setting the agendas, right?
Correct. Those are, but it's not my decision to make whether we choose to revisit things that we've dropped. It's us as a whole to decide what our projects are and whether we'd like to continue them. So, I'd like to, just in general, think about it, revisit it.
So is Capitol Permit Plan something, the Planning Commission or council, or both would be looking at?
Capitol Permit Plan.
Yeah, CIP.
For what?
For the village.
What question, what, of what I said, I missed, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking about an additional...
Oh, a different one?
You're talking about anything more project-wise and stuff like that, and I'm just asking about Capitol Permit Plan, where that would fit in the list.
Oh, that we need to revisit that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I know we've, the last copy I had, has anything been done with the one since it was like July of last year?
No.
Okay, cause I think that we should revisit that, cause we have all the road projects on there, there was timing put on there. I would really like to see that get updated and reviewed, so that we can, you know, have that when we get around to looking at the budgeting and stuff like that too. Cause I mean, I think that's an important thing, is seeing what projects we have that we were supposed to have gotten done and maybe didn't get done yet, what we are planning to get done, and do we have the money for it, and how to budget and plan the budget to be able to accomplish those.
All right, we'll add it on there. Anything else, anybody? Absolutely.
We're gonna search for two more specimens on getting, you know, engineered to get to the...
The plans.
We need to, whoever we get a hold of, they're gonna have to take their information off the already drawings that are already, like on Dale's table. That's gonna be their only source of getting information, meaning to come up with an estimate, cause we're not gonna, we're not gonna go back out in the village again and start shooting grades again.
All right, no, oh, no, you have to use existing information, for sure. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Good point.
But they've been paid for it, they've been paid for it though, right? I mean, it's our information now, so we can...
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support?
Was that you?
Support.
All right, adjourn at 9:07.
I guess "uh-huh" doesn't count as support.
It was Dan, I know it was Dan.